Good afternoon, everyone. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners work session is now called to order. The date is August 12th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. At this time, we will do roll call. Item two, District one, District three, District two, and District four.
Present.
Thank you. All right. Board members, are there any preliminary items to this date for the upcoming BLC meeting that you would like to discuss?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Allen.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, oh, and, hold on, I have some more, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and eleven. So I'm repeating. So twenty...
I got it. Eleven, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So for item eleven... And let me see if I have...
Now it's eleven on the, that's on the, I guess this is the regular agenda.
Okay.
It was a zoning thingy.
So is the GK here? You can come up. Mr. GK, please approach the podium. Commissioner Allen?
Do you have your agenda with you? Do you have an agenda? No, GK can see. Okay. He may need one for the August, I'm looking at the August 19th. Okay. Okay. Well, my question for number thirty-eight, Resolution 2025-177, to initiate a text amendment to Highway 54 overlay District Section 4.56 residential land uses. Are you familiar in that?
Yes.
Can you kind of explain what is the request here?
The request is just to clean up the overlays. We saw where there were boundary conflicts. So that's just a cleanup. We're not changing anything. Just make sure that the boundaries don't conflict.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then number thirty-eight, so for this rezoning from agriculture to PUD, it's in the consent agenda, but Miss Battle of the Battle Law Firm, they withdrew their request for that. I just want to confirm.
I think they did, but it will still come through because it was advertised.
Okay.
So it will still come through to the board so that the motion was made on that day to put it on record.
But it's on the consent agenda.
It was.
Item thirty...
Thirty-nine.
Yeah. Item thirty-nine is on the consent agenda for the August 19th meeting.
Commissioner, can you please wait to be recognized? Thank you. All right. Commissioner Allen, please finish your statement, and then you all can, we can go forward. So you're saying it's on the consent agenda, so they're saying it's on the consent agenda, so...
I need to double check. I don't have mine.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was asking. Did you have, so you could see?
Yeah, I don't have, because if it is zoning matter, it will not be under consent.
Want to borrow mine?
So it needs to be moved?
Yeah, to the regular, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I guess the last thing was eleven, but it looks like all of this is with the Battle Law Firm. I just want to confirm that she was withdrawing her application to rezone.
Yes, I think there's one application where he's, she's asking to withdraw.
Okay. That's all my questions were for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get that CO?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. And then twenty...
And all the other ones were budget amendments for the 2025 budget. I guess Ms. Jackson will be...
Ms. Jackson, can you come forward, please?
Answer that one.
Is she here?
She is.
Okay.
Well, we can skip if somebody else...
Is she in the back?
No, she was.
She was in the back. Okay. She's not here to answer.
Okay.
If not, you can, you can send any, can you answer anything, or do you want to just send her an email?
If Commissioner wants to put on record her question, I have my support documentation, so I may be able to answer it. If not, then I'll defer to her.
Okay. So my question would have been...
CO, please approach the bench.
Why are we amending the 2025 budget?
Like I'm the judge.
So the budget amendments were for 2025, you know, the past budget.
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we amending that? And then, because the money is already spent there, so I'm not sure what we are amending. And then what exactly is carryover?
Ms. Jackson, can you please approach the podium, please?
I was going to do my best to provide the answer, but I know that finance, Ms. Jackson and the team, oftentimes the cleanup amendments are still after the quote-unquote cutoff date for going into the new fiscal year. And so what happens as they're going through, the amendments still have an open account, but those amendments that are coming forth still will hit the previous fiscal year. So Ms. Jackson is probably more qualified to answer that question than the question from the commissioners about why are we still seeing cleanup amendments or seeing amendments for '25 even though we're in the new fiscal year.
Yeah, perfect.
Amendments for fiscal year '25 will continue until at least sixty days after the fiscal year. You have to amend back invoices for, thank you, for services or products received in 2025.
So how does that reflect on the audit?
The auditors, once they come in, you have to do that. So if we don't do it ourselves, they will force us to do it when they come in, and then it's considered an audit entry versus an entry by the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you explain what that difference is, though? We mean an audit entry versus an entry from the county?
All right. Can, I'm going to say, board members, can you all please raise your hand when you all speak, so as we go through, I can recognize everybody?
Even during the work sessions?
Yeah, because I need to be able to recognize, and we need to be able to hear everybody. So Commissioner Reeves, thank you. Yes.
Okay. So the difference is, for the county to do, with accounting, you have what's called a thirteenth month.
Mm-hmm.
And so then certain entries have to go into that month. So once the auditors come in, it's considered an audit entry, which means the county didn't see the entry or didn't get the invoice in time, and it's just, even though you don't get deemed on the report necessarily, it's not looked at as favorable. So you want to make any adjustments possible before the auditors come in for field work. But like I said, invoices are still coming in, as well as you have some grants that are closing, and so then any payments that may not have been covered by the grants are moved back to the general fund as well, if the invoice didn't come in in time.
And I know that in June, we also did the budget amendment, or that was supposed to be the cleanup budget amendment, that was nineteen and a half million dollars in June. Is any of the budget amendments listed here? Are those reconciled in the budget amendments that we approved in June before FY25 closed?
Those entries were valid for then. These are not, they're not the same entries. Some of the amendments, and I'm not sure which ones you were, you're looking at, because I was trying to get an agenda, but some of these entries are for FY26, and some are for FY25. The lower numbers, and if you look at where it says, "I do hereby request and submit the following budget amendments to be approved for fiscal year ending," if it says 63026, that's for fiscal year '26. If it says for 63025, then that's for fiscal year '25. So most of the lower numbers, like 2-3, 2-4, those are FY26 amendments. The ones with the higher budget amendment numbers are for FY25.
Commissioner Reeves, you have any other questions at this time?
In general, or for the finance?
For the finance. Or anything that you, anything I asked about, the preliminary items for the agenda, you have any?
Oh, yes. I have several questions about preliminary items, but it's not, it's not finance or labor.
Okay. What numbers?
Thirty-six on the regular agenda. And then I have, is Director GK still here? Hey!
Mr. GK, please approach the bench. The podium.
Did they get you a copy of the agenda?
Thank you.
Awesome.
What number?
Thirty-six. Is the Resolution 2025-175 Georgia power easement, Rex Rope?
Is that community development or transportation and development?
That will be power easement. That will be TND, maybe.
I'm not trying to start nothing.
I can tell you this is not what we, we didn't submit this. I do, not knowing the specifics, sometimes Georgia Power contacts the legal office about an easement needed for their facilities. Same thing with the water authority, so it could come from various different avenues into your agenda.
Okay.
So to answer your question, Ms. Commissioner, yes, Jeff is correct. This is submitted by legal, and so if there is a particular question regarding easement, Chief Staff Attorney certainly can provide context.
I'll ask her.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there any?
And he's not here today.
He's not here.
Oh, I still had a question for Director GK, though.
Director GK, come back up to the podium.
You keep trying to sit down.
I just don't hear.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure that I am not missing a zoning item for District one. I see the DTRA Automotive, which is the emissions. That's item number seven on the consent agenda. The numbers start over. Item number seven. I see item number fourteen and item number fifteen, all for District one, but I do not see the item for the QuickTrip expansion on Forest Parkway. And I know that was at the last ZAG meeting.
Commissioner, if you don't mind, if we can look at this, this agenda will be finalized tomorrow. Let's make sure that all districts are in here.
Okay.
Because this is just a draft.
Is it, is it possible for the zoning entries to put them together by district? I just, I don't want to overlook it, because I'm looking through, you know, District one, I have seven, and then it goes through a few other districts, and then I'm back at District one further down in the agenda. I'm not, I just, I'm not sure what that process looks like.
Yeah, we can, but it requires us to have a discussion with the clock as to how to arrange those things. Yeah.
Okay.
CO.
Madam Commissioner, so to help, I know the work session, with the agenda itself, sometime it's representative of the items that we have that's in the system at the moment. So what traditionally would happen, once we completed the agenda after the agenda meeting on two o'clock on that Wednesday, meaning tomorrow, then we will have the actual agenda items in its appropriate locations, as well as hopefully finalize an agenda unless there is an additional request from a board member or an emergency item that needs to come before the board prior to the five o'clock cutoff on that Wednesday. So we can certainly ensure that as it pertains to the work session, if there's areas that we need to clear up so it is easier read, then certainly we'll make those changes for the board. But I just at least want to provide you some context to why the agenda is set up the way it is right now, because a lot of the items still probably is not noted on the agenda, because we're still waiting for staff to bring in additional information.
Right. I understand that. And then also the commissioners receive, like the, all of the commissioners receive the draft of the agenda on Thursday, so that we can see a final draft before it's presented to the public in the press.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Hamburg, do you have any items?
I do not.
To discuss? All right. And do you have any items to discuss, Commissioner? Good. All right. We'll move on. Next will be our work session items. Before we go into our work session, I want to thank, we have Mr. Cobb's here tonight from Riverdale, Riverdale City Councilman. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for coming out. Am I missing anybody? I don't have my glasses on tonight. Are we good? All right. Again, thank you for coming out, Mr. Cobb's. We appreciate you, and we appreciate you coming out. Next is our work session items. Number one, request to amend code Clayton, excuse me, Code of Clayton by adding new ordinance 62-48, Chief Roberts. Come to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. Do I need to bring Director GK back? This shouldn't take long at all, and actually, I'm coming back before this board in reference to a presentation I made at the retreat at the first part of this year. And after discussions with at least one, if not two commissioners, and eventually all of you individually, I think there's a place here for us to create a marijuana ordinance that serves the needs of this county and our citizens. I know that when I presented it in January, that there was some reluctance, because the only jurisdictions that were presented at the time were cities. Well, since that presentation, we know that two counties have adopted similar ordinances. It was Macon Beale County and Fulton County. Do we have my actual presentation? And I say presentation, it's only three slides. So the intent of the ordinance is to provide an alternative to jail time for possession of marijuana less than an ounce. And we know as our county is diverse, and our county is young, we often find that our citizens are sometimes arrested for these indiscretions, and they may be younger in life. And what we don't want to do is burden them with a criminal record and jail time if we can provide alternatives. This marijuana ordinance proposed does just that. And just to refresh your memory, it's for possession of marijuana less than an ounce, and it does not involve any jail time, and it does not have any effect on an individual's driving record. And I will say that I've touched out, I've reached out and touch base with the Solicitor's Office and our magistrate court judge, and they are seated behind me, and they endorse this endeavor, as our jail is occupied by several individuals who've been arrested for these such charges. And with this ordinance, we can write a citation and enforce a civil fine up to $150 that does not inadvertently impact someone's criminal record, and it focuses on education and recovery, about the dangers of narcotics and what it can do to impact your life. And finding a guilty is not a conviction of a drug crime, it's an ordinance violation and will be handled as such, and offenders will be redirected to community resources for education and recovery. As I said before, I know I presented this in January, and at the time, only the cities of Atlanta, Savannah, South Fulton, and Augusta had adopted the same, but since then, Macon Beale County and Fulton County have adopted similar ordinances, and I'm asking this board to consider doing the same thing at the very next meeting. It's that easy. Questions?
All right. I'll start to the left of me. Commissioner Davis?
I have no, no questions. Longtime comic.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner?
Okay. Chief, will you run through a sample, I guess, if someone is stopped?
Yes, ma'am.
And has the, what, one ounce or less than an ounce or whatever?
Less than one ounce, which is less than 28 grams of marijuana. During an interaction on a traffic stop, let's say I stop you for a real-life violation, I made contact with you, and somehow or another, we get to the point that we discover that you have less than an ounce of marijuana in your presence. What we would do, or what the officer would do, is write you a citation, and that citation will serve as a summons for you to either pay that up to $150 fine and/or you can dispute it in magistrate court, and it'd be done. The way it's written now, we'd arrest you on a state charge, you go to jail and could receive a fine up to $1,000 and spend twelve months, less than twelve months in jail. Big difference.
So why, why go to court, then?
Because you got a right to dispute any charge I bring against you.
Oh, okay.
As a police officer, so to your point...
You really won't be found guilty, then, of anything? You just have to go to court, because you haven't paid the one...
No, I'm not saying that. You can still go to court and be found guilty in a courtroom, but it allows due process for our citizens. I mean, just because I give you a citation is not an automatic indicator of guilt. You can either choose to pay the fine, or you can come to court to dispute the charge.
Okay. But no, but no record?
No record. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So what's the difference? So if they're driving under the influence of marijuana, they will still get fined for that? Is that correct?
That's a totally separate charge, and yes.
I want to, I'm saying this, because I want people to understand. That's a totally separate charge from the ounce of marijuana.
I'm glad you...
If you're driving under the influence, please explain the difference, because I want people to make sure, because when we get laws, people get on Instagram, Facebook, "Did you know that there's a new law that you can smoke?" And I don't want that to get out there. Or you can drive and smoke. I need you to clarify what it means.
Let me back up. I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes, sir.
This is not about legalization. Marijuana is illegal. This is about having a different option as it comes to resolving the disposition for that violation. And as to multiple charges, you can have a charge for DUI that's separate from the possession of marijuana. You're going to be held accountable for that DUI the same way you normally would for a DUI arrest. I can stop you for, I mean, not stop you, but you can be arrested for a theft charge. We'll handle that separately, but we can still, the officer can still write the citation for the possession of marijuana less than an ounce, if that makes sense. So you use DUI, I use theft by taking, it could be several other options. Those charges will stand, and they are separate from the possession of marijuana ordinance violation.
Thank you. Because a lot of times, our citizens get things confused, and I want to make sure that they understand what the differences are.
Thank you for doing that. They're going to wa, watch this and still try to say what you just said.
And I'm going to still tell you, we're going to stand on what Chief is saying and what the differences are. Uh, Commissioner Allen?
No questions.
All right. And Commissioner Reeves?
I think I have a question.
Okay.
I take it back. I have two questions. It is about under the ordinance, Section 6248, about Section E, disposal of suspected marijuana. Is that, it says law enforcement officers are authorized, but not required, to destroy suspected amounts?
No. And if they do not destroy, I'm glad you brought this up, if they do not destroy it, they will be forced to place it in our evidence.
Okay.
So those are the two options. But one of the reasons we wanted to go this route is that, because I know the Solicitor's Office is not prosecuting that charge. So we have, right now, evidence sitting in our evidence storage that will not be used for prosecution. It's taking up space. So I would rather give the officer an option to destroy that marijuana on sight with an interviewable body camera for evidentiary record and not have to occupy our evidence storage with needless marijuana for cases that will not be prosecuted.
How do you destroy it on sight? I mean, at the stop?
Stomp and grind.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Right there on asphalt.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We're not lighting it up.
And my other question was just around differentiating, I don't, I don't know if that's, all right, we're in Georgia. Never mind. I was almost going to say medical marijuana. That's, Georgia's not there yet. But Georgia did legalize Delta Eight? Is that the one? Because I've seen it being sold at, at shops.
Yes, ma'am. So another reason we're having this discussion is because of the costs associated with testing and lab work, and the fact that the GBI is backed up, and not testing. So once again, it's about saving space and not wasting time. And the bottom line is, as it relates to this personal-use marijuana, we have the option of destroying it on the side of the road, and these officers should have the experience to identify the same, experience and training.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions at this time, board members? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Next is Human Resources. Be Safe, Be Well Microsite.
Good evening, Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good evening to our citizens and Clayton County family members who are here. The purpose of this very, very brief presentation is just to make the board aware, to keep you in the loop, in making sure that we are involving the right people at the right time. You can go to the next slide for me, or do I have it here? I have it here. So what, what is our Wellness Microsite is a single platform to host all of our wellness and benefits-related products and services that is offered to our very valued employees. It will have all things wellness and benefits. It's a one-stop shop for wellness information, educational information, as well as any events and contests that we may be holding at a particular time. It offers, it will offer collaborative tools to bring the Clayton County family together. It's basically resources at your fingertips. The cost is a one-time $10,000 fee that is going to be paid through our Wellness Technology Credit. With our consultant MMA, there is absolutely no cost to the county. It will be a link provided to our employees that requires no sign-on credentials, so there is no issues of safety concerns, no employee numbers or anything like that is needed to gain access to this particular platform. There's also no manpower required from our highly talented IT team. Our consultants, they are, their particular IT team is working with Human Resources to develop and build out the site. They're going to offer implementation support, promotional materials to, and help us to launch it, ongoing updates to the site. So there's a lot of different things that this particular site will provide to us. I just wanted the Board of Commissioners to know that that, that this is coming, to see if the board had any questions or concerns. I've already involved our wonderful Ms. Carol Rogers and provided her with everything that we need. And with that being said, I say it would be quick and fast. Are there any questions that the board has at this time?
Board members, are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Hamburg?
No.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Thank you.
And if it pleases the board, I think I'm still on the agenda next. So I'll stand right here.
Yep. You can go on to the next one. Number three is Reclassification, Transportation and Development.
And Director Matarco, you want to come on up?
Director Matarco, please come up.
Silver Service Rule Four, Position Classification Plan, and Silver Service Rule Five, Compensation Plan. Assign accountability to manage these plans to the head of Human Resources. It is by the assignment of this duty that on behalf of our department heads, that I bring forth various requests for personnel changes to the Board of Commissioners for your consideration to either approve or deny. Last week, LR's 9868 and 9869 was presented to the board. Human Resources reviewed the request, and we do support Director Matarco and Director Dozier in regards to these requests. We reviewed them. We found no internal or external parity or other related concerns. Absent of any other budgetary considerations, TND and Fleet Maintenance requests results in an overall savings of $52,567. All of these positions, I think it's 51 different classifications that is listed in the LR, but there is a combined total of savings of $52,567, absent of any other budgetary considerations. Elections requests results in a savings of $65,680. But to be transparent with the board, if the board approves that particular request, on the heels of this request, will be another request in regards to compensation for Director Dozier. So we talked, she and I talked about it earlier... So we talked, she and I talked about it, uh, earlier today and I wanted to make sure I put that out there to the board in an effort to be transparent. Director Matarco, he can provide additional feedback about his request. Director Dozier unfortunately, unfortunately is at a conference, um, this evening. Jeff?
Good evening. Some of you, not all of you, have heard the trials and tribulations of TND's had over the years about filling positions. You can see on our org chart all the green spaces, um, which are really red, but we're trying to look optimistically. The green are our vacancies. For a little context of history, um, currently we're at thirty-seven percent vacancy in our department. Um, in a couple of weeks, we'll be up to thirty-eight percent vacancies. Over the years, we've, we've held strong in the thirties. If you go back two years, we're thirty-nine percent. If you go back four years, we're thirty-three percent. Seven years ago, we were at thirty percent vacancies. Um, you have to go back ten years to get back to seventeen percent and a whole whopping fourteen years back to ten percent when we were coming out of the recession back in oh-eight and oh-nine. This isn't a Clayton County thing, this is kind of the technical industry that we're working within. Both on manual labor, equipment operator jobs and engineering level positions. For the past several years, we have submitted through the budget process recommendations to increase salaries. Um, we've provided backup about competitors, um, and their salary rates and how we're falling behind. And we keep falling behind further and further. This year during the budget process, um, the Budget Committee, um, asked for a smaller recommendation from the department and not addressing all a hundred and sixty-something positions, something, um, a little bit more tangible. So we, we came back with a proposal to address certain level of positions, mainly the engineering grade positions. And we put that on the table. So in, in my opinion, this is a continuation of what was submitted during the budget process. It does provide a savings to the county and it does make certain positions that we have in our org chart uh, more competitive with the industry, both other government agencies, our neighbors, and the private sector. Um, and which hopefully will parlay with some at least qualified applications, which will hopefully turn into a couple of hires. On the fleet side, what wasn't a part of that, we had an unexpected resignation of one of our senior staff members. And at that time, I, I brought it to the CO's, um, attention that the org structure has some, um, hindrance on how we operate day to day. And I suggested a slight tweak of the org structure, given the vacancy. Um, and not putting words in his mouth, but he understands and, and supported the effort. So that's why we decided, since we're addressing TND, um, to put the fleet operations on there. And, and that's, uh, again, to, I mentioned it last week, to try to make us a little bit more slim in certain areas and more efficient and trying to, um, address it because we do have this vacancy. Um, and it, it can reduce that, that role and try to enhance some of the other needs in the department that have come to light over the last couple of years of operation. So in, in total, as Director Amber said, um, there's a savings to the county. Um, actually, we are losing some positions by creating the, the money to increase the salaries. But these positions have been vacant and they continue to be vacant. And to be honest with you, there, there's no end in sight right now with the vacancies. So this addresses not all the department, um, be open and honest, it does not address everything. Um, but it's something that we felt we could put forward to that is definitely budget neutral, that's attainable this year and with more work to be done over the subsequent years to address the, the other aspects of the department, as you all well know, countywide. So, um, if you've got questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can.
All right, Board members, are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Davis?
I have one question. Do you believe that this will increase the hiring probability with this reorg?
It has to. It can't go down and lower.
I understand your wish, but do you believe?
Yes, sir, but being quite honest, if you expect me to be able to fill all my vacancies, that's unrealistic.
Definitely not.
But yes, I'm, I am hopeful. It's the most promising thing we've had in the last five years of, of trying to make it more attractive. We have had interviews over the last, I'm going to say three or four years.
Right.
And the, the biggest issue is, is the salary. Even as attractive as we try to make the department about future, um, roles and responsibilities, the salary is just, is not competitive right now.
I understand, thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Uh, no, but I would like to speak with you offline about something else with the department.
Okay.
Commissioner Reeves?
Oh, um. Less of a question, more, more of a statement, because I know we still have our Director of HR here. Um, I remember in our leadership meeting that we had, uh, or the retreat that we had in, in January, one of, one of, uh, the results from the survey that HR did was about what keeps Clayton County employees here. And it's not always the, the salary, it's, it's the benefits, it's the culture, it's the environment. Um, but from a hiring perspective, um, for TND and Fleet to be able to recruit and maintain, you know, qualified employees, that, that starting salary is key. So if this helps hire, uh, qualified, talented folks for TND to help make sure that the roads are safe, potholes are filled and that all of the county fleet cars are maintained, getting them in the door. I know, uh, Director Ambles and the entire HR team will keep them here, so. If this gets them in the door, then HR will keep them here, so.
It's a step in the right direction from my pers- perspective, definitely.
Director Ambles, did you want to say anything?
This is off topic, but we do want to invite the Board of Commissioners to the twenty-twenty-six Employee Gratitude Day. It's going to be awesome. We have catered food, DJ, massage chairs, just a whole nine yards. So we're hoping that we see the board there to support these wonderful, just, just, I can't, I can't say enough about our employees. Thank you.
It's on my calendar.
Next will enter, okay, CO.
Madam Chair, I, I think it's important in our work session that, um, Jeff brought up a good point as well as the HR Director. Commissioner Hambrick asks a very poignant question in our last board meeting and about, how do we ensure that we don't continue to have constant requests of the board about reclassifications and changes? And there's a couple of things we're doing to address that. One, when we have a department that has anywhere between a thirty-plus vacancy rating in their department, that is an anomaly that we're dealing with. All departments don't have that huge of a vacancy rate, so therefore that doesn't necessarily call for reclassification. But as Mr. Matarco talked about, when you talk about retention in the said space, it's very difficult. So that's one thing. Look at how high is the, the, um, the walkout rate is within that department. Two, is that what's happening with those employees, where are they going? And a lot of the times, they're going to other locations because there is a higher salary rate. And sometimes that's at anywhere between a twenty to twenty-five percent higher salary, um, come-in rate than what we have in space. So how do we continue to stay competitive? So we certainly will look at that. And then thirdly, looking at the fact that in most instances, we're asking the board to consider this and do it without hitting the fund balance to make it work. So when a department can come to the board and ask for it to take place without there being any impact, meaning that can do it with some salary savings within their department, not for the next four months, not in the next five months, but annually and continually doing that over a period of time, is also important. So we're going to come to you with criteria that we're not going to just haphazardly bring reclassifications because it's being asked. But there has to be certain criterias that the, the particular department is looking at to ensure that if we're making it ask, then we're really in a dire strait for making sure that the need that the department is asking for, we can meet it. So again, you all are holding us accountable to make sure that the request we're making, we can show you a track record with a metric that shows you that there's a problem. Then ultimately, um, try to do that at a clip of doing it budget neutrally, so ultimate goal. So we just wanted to make sure we bring that to the fore.
Well, thank you, because we definitely need to see that data as we, um, move forward. Thank you. All right. Next will be, um, number five, um, the Zone Code Rewrite, and Mr. GK.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Vice, and good evening. Our presentation today is to announce the start of the Zoning Rewrite Project. With me today, uh, my planning team, my planning and zoning team, and the Zoning Rewrite Consultant. Before I introduce the consultant, um, and Sizmore Group, I'd like to acknowledge community development, planning, and zoning staff that are here.
Commissioner Reeves?
Um.
Director GK, also, can you provide the board with a copy of it? I don't have a copy, do y'all have one?
Of the presentation?
Yeah. Okay, I will.
When you get it, when you, um, we'll get it after you finish, that's fine, or whenever, tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
You got a copy, D.C.R.
So our consultant, um, with us, as you know, the project was awarded to Sizmore Group. And this evening, we have Ms. Deanna Murphy, who is the project manager for this project. And, um, our execs had to come up and, um, introduce her, her team. You've gathered several emails from me to appoint folks and we're going to schedule, we're really, we and I are relying on this project to make the changes we need to make in the county. As you know, our code had some deficiencies in it. This is our opportunity to clarify that. So we're going to have a one-on-one meetings with Commissioners. I'm going to try my best to be in most meetings, so I can hear, hear myself, what the vision of the board are. And also, I want to say thank you for how quickly you all nominated your representatives to the Steering Committee. I'm encouraging all the Steering Committee members not to be passive, to speak off and, um, do what we need to do to get us on the right track. So with this, I will hand it over to Ms. Murphy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you all so much for having me here tonight. I'm Deanna Murphy with Sizmore Group, um, and we are very excited to get this project started. Um, Sizmore Group is an architecture, planning, interiors firm. Uh, we're located in downtown Atlanta and we were, uh, very lucky to be working on the comprehensive plan that we completed last year. Um, this was one of the recommendations that came out of the plan was to do a zoning rewrite. And so we're very excited to be able to help carry forth that vision from the comp plan into this. Um, we have a, uh, great team, uh, many of whom are here tonight. Pilkett Jane from Sizmore Group is also here. As our role with Sizmore Group, we'll be doing overall project management. Um, but our intent really is to help, um, be more of a client representative. Um, we worked with you all through the comp plan. We've been engaged in a lot of community meetings and trying to understand what the community wants to see happen here in the county. And we're hoping to bring that into this zoning rewrite. Um, we've partnered with White, or yes, White Smith and Casino. Uh, we have Mark White here tonight. Um, and they are experts in zoning rewrites. They've done this all over the nation. We wanted to bring that national expertise into this process to make sure that we make something that is new and moves forward, um, the goals of the county. And then last but not least, we have Sycamore Consulting, who you are likely familiar with. They've worked on several plans in the county. Um, and Madison Davis is here tonight and he's actually been, um, involved in projects previously. So knows a lot about the processes and, um, what's needed for that engagement. So what is a zoning rewrite? Um, essentially, it's different than a lot of the amendments that you've done over the past several years. This is a true rewrite. So we will look at every part of the zoning code and look at what can be redone, uh, what we can keep, um, but what we really need to change to make sure that this fits the needs of the county. We're going to ensure throughout this that legal compliance is done, especially new policies that have come about since the last rewrite. We believe that last rewrite was about twenty-two thousand and eight. Um, so a lot has changed over time, so we want to make sure that's all up to date. Um, and White Smith and Casino are lawyers by trade, so that, they bring that legal understanding as well. Um, and we'll work with your legal department as well to ensure that's, um, in line. Um, community input and engagement is a large part of this process. Uh, we heard a lot in the previous planning, plan for the comprehensive project. Uh, but we want to make sure that we're starting with the community as well in this process and getting that right. Um, overall items that may be included in this rewrite is a look at the zoning categories. We'll look at, um, new categories potentially, restructuring existing categories, uh, overlay districts, um, maybe new ones or revising current ones. We'll look at specifically at both parking and signage standards. Um, we'll be updating the development standards and then looking at the procedures and making sure that we're revising those appropriately for current, um, desire. And then an important part is also a new zoning map. So we'll be looking at any changes to the overall zoning throughout the county. Um, our project goals really start with making sure that we're modernizing the overall land use regulations here in the county. Um, we also want to make sure that we're aligning with the Moving Clayton Forward. Um, not only the comprehensive plan, but also all the work that Patrick and his team has been, have been doing. Um, that includes the new, um, permitting processes they've been working on, economic developments, um, incentive packages, uh, future land use map, um, updates, scheduling. We want to make sure all of that's really aligned with this new rewrite. We also want to make sure that the zoning code is simple and clear, so that as the development community comes in, um, we are making that easy for them to understand what is wanted and where. We want to address contradictions. I think as, um, Director Ajiki mentioned, there are a lot of contradictions as a lot of amendments have been done over the years. We want to make sure we are, uh, addressing those and reducing those. And then an ultimate goal is to really support economic development in the county. We also want to address housing goals. Um, those we understand have to do with everything from supporting missing middle housing, um, higher income housing, the opportunities for aging in place. We want to make sure that fits into our overall zoning recommendations. And then last but not least is we want to enable sustainable and equitable goals, many of which came out of that comprehensive plan. This is our overall project schedule. Uh, we're just under two years to complete the project. So we kicked off in, uh, in July with some initial meetings with, um, Director Ajiki and his staff. We're going to spend, uh, through September, really looking at, uh, what's been going on. We're going to review the existing zoning code, we're going to review existing and previous documents. Um, we're going to start interviews and really start to understand what's working and what's not. Through that, we'll start the diagnostic review and that's really looking at the zoning code. You'll have a memo that comes out that says, here's what works, what doesn't, here's what we want to address in our rewrite. Um, and so that will be a, a key component for us setting the direction of this rewrite. Um, throughout the process is public engagement and we'll go over that in just a minute. Um, and then the actual code development and that rewrite will be the bulk of time from November to March of two thousand and seven. There will be drafts of different sections of the rewrite coming out throughout that process, which is why you see document deliverables on a full, almost two-year schedule there, because there will be drafts of that document coming out periodically so that we can make sure that that moves and we get all the input we need, um, from staff and from you all as well. Um, and then project management will be another component that runs throughout the course. Um, our community engagement, uh, starts here tonight, so we are, um, asking you all to, um, give us any insight and input and support, uh, to move forward. We will meet with you all again in May of two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, but that will not be the only time we meet with you. We also have stakeholder interviews. Um, we'd like to set aside interviews with you all starting in December. Once we have some of that diagnostic review complete, that way we can share what we've learned with you all and get your input on what you want to see happen in the zoning rewrite. We'll have, we'd like to set interviews with you all again in January through March as we have draft portions of the rewrite complete, so we can get, um, direct feedback as well. Um, in addition to your involvement, we will have, um, engagement in the community information meetings. We'll be there tomorrow night at the CIM to give a heads up to the community that this process is happening and we want them to be engaged. We'll then also have a zoning advisory group, um, which we thank you all for putting, um, selecting members for us to have on that committee. We'll meet with them two times. We'll meet with them two times throughout the process. And then we have our, oh, I'm sorry, I was talking about the advisory committee. That meets five times throughout the process. Sorry about that. And so you can see those dates. That will be, the advisory committee is really that check-in for us before we go to the community. We want to make sure we're meeting the right, we have the right direction and right information. The zoning advisory group, the ZAG, we will meet with two times, and that's mostly in alignment with meeting with you all. So we'll meet with them this month, and then again in May around the time we meet with you to hopefully get approval and adoption of that final process. We do have invitation to ZAG members to join the advisory committee, so hopefully they will be involved throughout the process as well. We will have a series of eight public meetings total. We have two different points where we'll meet with the community. Early on, in October and November, we have some dates already, dates and locations already selected, which you can see on the packet. Our intent is to meet in each district so that we can get a broad overview of the entire county and what is desired in each area. So that first meeting is really goal-setting and understanding what some of the challenges are. The second meeting, we are planning for February through March. Again, we'll meet in each district. At that point, we will have some draft code elements written, and we would like to get review and input from the community at that point. We also have included in our scope of work four pop-up events, and so those will happen, the plan is for those to happen between those two meetings. So between November and into February, we'll have pop-up events with the community so we can get real-time feedback on some of the ideas we're thinking through and recommendations we're looking to make. We'll also have online engagement, working closely with your communications team. There is a website that we are currently generating, and that will be shared with your communication team's help over the next couple of weeks, as well as that social media engagement. And that is my presentation. So thank you all so much for your time, and we're here for any questions.
Commissioner Reeves.
Oh, for, for questions? Thank you for the presentation, Deanna. I know I last saw you on the Aristropolis.
That's right.
Catalytic bus tour.
Yes.
So, um. I forgot my first question. Can you circle back to me?
I have a question. So you have District Two, November 13th, and District Three, November 11th. You're gonna do two in that week?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, just wanted to make sure. Okay, all right. Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, when is the first meeting with the new group that was formed?
The advisory committee? We're looking at September.
Okay, is it advisory or the rewrite?
Let me make sure I got the. So we have, we're calling it the advisory committee. And that is the group of about 20 people that you all selected representation for. That meeting is planned for September. We have not set a date. The plan is for an official email to go out in the next week or two from Director Ajiki, inviting them to join the process. And then we will send them a doodle poll to ask them a couple of dates that work in September. So it's to be scheduled, but we're looking at middle to late September for that meeting.
Will they ever meet with, with our zoning board?
Yeah, so we're gonna meet with the zoning advisory board on, this month, on the 23rd?
No, will those two groups ever meet together?
That's a good question. We do have representation that has been selected from the ZAG to join that advisory committee. So there's overlap. We are hoping that that then allows for them to coordinate throughout the process. Are you, want to understand your comment? Is it more about trying to have the ZAG and the advisory committee at the same time?
Well, not really, but right, how they can work together. But more importantly is when we appoint people to these different boards, they will ask us, well, me anyway, when, when are we meeting? How often do we meet, those kind of things?
Yes.
So I just want to be able to, you know, respond correctly.
Yes, yes, and so the plan is, we have months essentially right now since we don't have exact dates selected, but the advisory committee would meet five times. We have tentatively September, December, April, September of next year, in January 2027. We will work with them on actual dates. We want to make sure date, time works for as many of those committee members as, as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, want to know briefly, how will this affect some of the most recent zoning that we put in place?
That's a really good question, and I have a whole team here. Patrick, do you want to, or Mark?
Mr. GK, you want to come to the podium?
Uh, Mark? Mark, you can come to if you like.
Given the recent changes that we have, once they get to those areas, we'll carefully review it. The intent here is that the changes that we are making or we've made are not just something we did without thinking. So we will share that thinking with a consultant. This is the basis of how we got here.
Okay.
So that we, we don't, in wholesale, they get what the board is saying. But if there is a conflict where the bigger goal is, my goal here is for this code to support economic development. That's, that's what, what I'm hearing from the board. We have to do things a little bit differently. So when we get to those instances, we'll carefully evaluate to see what is going on. But more importantly, as we're doing this project, and something, there is a text amendment to be made, we will vet it with, with the project team first. See, does this idea fit into the bigger picture? And how, before we even bring it to the board?
Can you just answer my next question?
Yeah, yeah, so we will vet it with the consultants and say, okay, we have this. Does it fit into the bigger picture of where we want to get to? If they say yes, it does, because by, in no time, once they do the diagnosis, they will see what we already know. So then we'll be able to resolve some of those, these issues.
And also, how will you begin to poll each commissioner to begin to learn and understand their vision for that area?
In, in those one-on-one interviews with commissioner, that's where that gets known as to, in each district, what is their vision for this district. I've asked the consultant to, I'm gonna arrange my schedule to be in those meetings, so I can hear it and be able to answer some questions the consultant might not be familiar with of things that have happened in that district. So that way, and that's where the consultant is really relying greatly on those one-on-one meetings with the commissioner, because that's where they get the additional vision. The scope of work laid out more than the basic groundwork of this project. But more importantly, they want to hear from the district commissioner and the chair as to what, because they're gonna have a meeting with the chair also, what do your things should be happening? Yeah.
And, and lastly, I want to just kind of make the statement that I want to be very, very intentional of not stepping over the portion of Riverdale and going with this, some of these ideas, and beginning to really find out what those citizens are thinking on that side, especially on that hospital side.
And we will address those things, I forget the, yeah, to make sure.
And I just want to say thank you, Mr. GK, because we started doing some of those meetings in District One, and basically, we were asking people what did they want to see in their areas elsewhere, in that area when I was the commissioner over there. And, but however, also I wanted to ask you all, once we got our vision, once we start building, will we implement project managers within the, within our districts as well to make sure? So let's say, for instance, if Commissioner Davis says, I'm gonna do this, live, work, eat, and play, or whatever, in my district, who will be the project manager to make sure that, to, to make sure that he continues to know what's going on, or, you know, and keeps him, keeps, keeps him prized of, you know, when the project will begin, when the project will finish?
All that is built into what you go, you're gonna see next week in the reorganization, because that is built into it, where we are doing it internally and externally, where we are literally hands-on on all projects, and that is the game plan. And I would like, if you, if the board don't mind.
Mark, you're in the car.
I'm sorry, what's your last name, Mark?
White.
Mr. White, would you please come to the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and I'm, I'm sorry, did you want him to say something, Mr. GK? He's looking at me like. He's looking at me like, what am I supposed to?
Okay, yes, yeah, because Patrick just answered the question better than I could have, I think. I'm with White Smith Kuzino. I'm a part, one of the founding partners of that firm. You were told earlier, our specialty is zoning rewrites. We've done over about 250 projects like this in 37 states, including Georgia. We're, we're working with Augusta right now as well. And so, we're thrilled to be here. This is an exciting project. I think there's a lot of opportunity here in Clayton County, as well as challenges. And, you know, like Commissioner Davis mentioned too, when, when I hear of recent amendments, usually those reflect more current policy that was thought through, so we don't lightly, you know, disregard those. But one of our key objectives is to make the ordinance easier to understand. As you can tell, I mean, just reading through the ordinance, you know, it's, it's a chore for people. And so we want it to be something that's more comprehensible for folks when they pick up the ordinance. They know where to find the information they're looking for. When they're reading it, they can understand what they're reading. And we want to make sure, as Patrick is saying, we, we support economic development and housing. We want to make the right things easy, the things that you've identified in your conference of plan in Clayton County that we want to achieve. We want to make sure that the ordinance gets out of the way for the things you want to achieve, but also, you know, facilitates the outcomes you're looking for, and makes that as easy as possible.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Reeves, did you want to ask your questions now?
My question was more for Deanna, although, hi, Mr. White, good to meet you. I'm curious about the website that you all are building. Are y'all gonna bring back the interactive feature that you all had for the Moving Clayton Forward? I know that residents were, you know, really engaged in, in how they could, you know, get into the map and write notes and talk about what they want to see.
Definitely. So we are building out, it's Social Pinpoint was the platform we used for the comprehensive plan, and we are going to reuse that same platform, so it has a lot of those tools. I don't know if we've identified all the survey opportunities, but that is the intent, is to have interactive map capability so that someone can come in and drop a pin and get their comments on a certain area or a certain site within the county. So absolutely, yes.
Fantastic, great to hear.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Hamburg?
I do. And I think it might be for.
Mark.
Mark.
Mr. White, come up, please.
Well, it may not be, but I know sometimes, even with our zoning board, and when presentations are made to us or suggestions, or as to either deny or approve or whatever. And I'm not always certain that those members actually see the area that they're talking about. I don't know if they ride around and see what's what, because I've had a couple of questions myself in the past. So now, will your group or these groups that you all are putting together, will they actually put eyes on different sites?
Well, that's a great question and a timely one, because we're doing a drive around tomorrow. I know the consultant team has, the whole county. So we, we want to make sure we get the context of the county in place, and, you know, there's different parts of the county. I mean, you know, the areas up near the airport are quite different than areas in the south part of the county. So we want to see it and understand that from our perspective. But also, that's what the public outreach is about too. I mean, that gets citizens here, it gets stakeholders, it gets folks who build and invest here to the table. And so we learn from them as well. So we're gonna, we, we take all of that input, and, you know, the two key, I, I think, deliverables are, first of all, the diagnostic or the code audit that we're doing. It really takes what's in your plan, where, where there's gaps, where we need two, new tools, where we have too many tools maybe, that we need to get them out of the way and maybe clarify and make things more coherent. And then, you know, that's part of the drafting, which is an iterative process. You're not gonna adopt the first draft we come out with. I'd be shocked, that'd be a world record. You'll have questions, comments, folks in the community will, will as well. And they will bring their knowledge of their neighborhoods, the projects they're investing in and so forth to the table when we make those revisions as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. I just want to make sure that they don't just look at maps.
Oh, but.
That they actually put eyes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other questions at this time? Mr. GK and Sizmore Group, thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Great presentation, Ms. Murphy. Next is Parks and Recreation Fees and Charges Update, Director Nicole Horn.
All right, so good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present this update on our fees and charges policy for your consideration of Parks and Recreation. As we began to prepare for our visit from the Commission on accreditation for Parks and Recreation Agencies in 2026, along with some challenges that we've experienced, either due to the lack of knowledge or the misinterpretation or execution of our policy, we thought that it was important for us to make revisions where necessary and to educate our internal and external stakeholders in regards to the intent of the policy and the execution moving forward. So with that, first, our statement of philosophy is that a sound policy provides the guiding principles for managing fees and charges while maintaining flexibility to accommodate new programs, changing in demographics, and circumstances. Our purpose of this policy is to update the, to update the official fees and charges policy that provides the framework for the established set of fees and charges, which are fair and equitable for the use of facilities to include equipment and the participation in programs sponsored by the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department. Upon adoption, readoption, because you've adopted one, so we're asking you to readopt the new one. So upon readoption of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, this policy shall be applicable to all individuals who use facilities, special services, and we'll map out what special services means further in the presentation. Equipment and the participation in programs conducted by the Parks and Recreation Department until such time it is rescinded by the Board of Commissioners. So if you see items in red throughout the presentation, those are items where we've just made additions to the policy where we saw things were missing. So as it pertains to services, equipment, and facilities, we've added equipment to the special services, equipment, and facilities are beyond the scope of traditional leisure services. So what that means is when you're asking for special services or special equipment or specialized facilities, which I'll identify for you, that's not traditional Parks and Recreation program, and if you will, so. Which are things that we traditionally offer in our recreation centers or my staff is offering within our parks and athletic programs. So special services include but are not limited to organized tournaments on our fields, trips where if you need to use facilities to facilitate tri, I mean, I'm not facilities, I'm sorry, vehicles, our vans, to facilitate tru, trips, private group programs within our facilities and retail operations, so if you're having a program and you're asking to sell merchandise. Special facilities include but are not limited to reserved areas. Recreation centers were not included initially, and we've had some special requests for those. Spivey Splash Water Park, we're continuously getting special requests where individuals want to have parties in Spivey Splash. Lighted Ballfields Tennis Center, picnic shelters. We added the Lakeview Event Center. The event center was there initially as the amphitheater, but the event center was not included, so you could utilize the event center and not utilize the amphitheater and vice versa. So we thought it was important to add that to the policy. And then, of course, our parking lots and wooded areas and such, because, you know, Clayton County Parks and Recreation is in a lot of movies. You might not recognize it, but we are, so. And then we got a request recently for a wedding to use the parking lot for overflow. And then we got a request recently for a wedding to use the parking lot for overflow parking. So we wanted to make sure that we're covering all of those areas. Um, we've also added equipment, because equipment wasn't spelled out specifically here. That includes our mobile stage and Jumbotron. And then again, um, special services, equipment, and facility fees and charges were, shall recover costs through policies, um, that minimize tax dollar support. So again, we wanted to make sure that the equipment was outlined in this policy. So understanding that our primary focus in the county's strategic operational plan is to enhance the quality of life for our citizens through recreation, leisure, and play, we also have a fiscal responsibility beyond managing our operating budget. Um, some people don't realize that we are a revenue-generating department for the county, and it's important for us to maintain our revenue goals that have been set forth by finance. So as such, we've outlined criteria for establishing the fees and charges for our special services, equipment, and facilities. And I'm sure you can read through it, but what I wanted to highlight specifically, um, Clayton County-sponsored events, special services are organized, promoted, and conducted, this is the last bullet, in part by our outside, by an outside agency, organization, or individual. Negotiated responsibilities of both parties will be defined at minimum by written agreement. All facilities assessed, all facilities assessed to outside group for, for facility use, all fees, any fees, I'm sorry, any fees assessed to the outside group of facility use shall be established at a minimum to recover Clayton County direct cost. So what that means is, just because you've made a request, or you've had an elected official, whomever co-signed with you on an event, that does not mean that the event is totally free. There may be some fees assessed to that, depending on what your ask is. So what we will continue to do as a department is do the special facility use request, but we will outline what fees, um, that make an impact that we want to recoup from that event. So free ain't always free, I guess is the best way to say it. Um, also, rental fees and charges. What I did wanna outline here is, equipment rates are in addition to facility rates. So if you rent a facility from us, that doesn't mean that you get the Jumbotron and the mobile stage and whatever toys that we buy for free. So if there is a fee associated, or a fee is waived for the use of the facility itself, anything that comes with it, you may incur a fee. Um, and then I also wanted to outline that the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department and the Clayton County Public School District will require, at a minimum, established joint-use agreements to be executed when facilities are being utilized by either governing authority. Um, so what we're doing right now is we, we're researching what agreements we have out there and bringing those, um... We will be bringing those forward to you to make sure that we update those. 'Cause right now, the agreements only cover use of athletic facilities from the Parks and Recreation Department. So if there's any other requests, which we have gotten some that are unique, we'll need to outline with you all what that needs to look like. Um, other considerations, again, where you see in the red, we've added Board of Commissioners, 'cause the current policy that we have right now just states Clayton County, and we know Clayton County is a lot of things. So we want it to be clear that when facilities are available at no charge during regular operational hours for events, activities, and meetings, determined to be in the public's interest, when not otherwise in conflict with this policy, that that is for Clayton County Board of Commissioners, elected officials, de- and departments. So anyone under the purview of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, this applies to you. If you are not elected locally, but you might have been net lit, elected through the state, or federals, or however else you were elected, um, that does not apply for you. And it only applies also to registered homeowners associations. So some, we get calls sometimes about homeowners associations, but they need to be registered by, um, whatever the policy is, or, or however they register through the county. Um, other considerations, other elected officials and state government agencies. Uh, facilities may be available at the nonprofit rate, and in red, it's twenty-five percent. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. So it's twenty-five percent. I think initially, it was fifty percent, but since I've been the director, they said it was changed to twenty-five percent, and they've been reducing the rate by twenty-five percent, but it wasn't in writing. So I wanted to make sure that we reflected that in the policy. And this is for other elected officials, whether it's state, federal, other ways, and other agencies within the county that are non-Board of Commissioners. So that's it for the presentation. But what I did provide for you all, that you might not, that's not on the screen, is the rental agreement for equipment. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that we do have fees and charges that are associated with those. There is a rental agreement that needs to be provided for the customer that's asking to rent these things. But I just wanted to make sure that we're clear, a highlight for you all, that a staff member is required at all times when they're using county equipment. Um, customers are not allowed to adjust our equipment in any way, so we will rent it to you, but it comes at a cost for staff. So even if we decide that we're going to waive the fee, the staff will still need to receive payment for their services working outside of their normal work schedule. So I did wanna make sure that you all had that information as well. And if you have any questions?
Commissioner Davis?
Just one. When are, or, when are you anticipating this being on the agenda for implementation?
We can do the next board meeting?
Next board meeting? Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Okay. Uh, the last statement about our equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that at any time our staff needs to be the ones that, uh, control or work our equipment, even if it's for someone else?
Yes, ma'am. And reason being is, um, well, I'll use the directives event that we just had, for example. Um, we had a rainstorm in the middle of us showing Love and Basketball, and the whole screen went black. So Max and his team had to come and troubleshoot while the screen was going black. And then a cord went out, they had to get the cord, put the cord in, reset the settings, so that we can start the movie. And, um, Max and Brandon, or Max's team, they're intimately familiar with all of our equipment, so someone needs to be on staff, 'cause if you're messing with the adjustments or the, the knobs, when it breaks, it breaks.
And I think our equipment will last longer.
Yes, ma'am.
With that. But I do have a question regarding registered HOAs.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know in District Two, we have very few registered HOAs, but yet we have a lot of community meetings. So will that be an exception, or it has to be the registered HOA?
Or, I can, we can make the adjustment within the policy. That was here before. I think they register with the police department, maybe? And then, once they register with the police department and have official neighborhood watches, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Seal can help me out. But, um, once you do that, that's when you become registered, and then you utilize the facility for free. But we can look at that.
Right, 'cause I, most of mine are just communities, community meetings, or, um, but not registered.
And typically, you're there. So yes, ma'am, I said typically, you're there.
Yeah.
So yes, ma'am, will, but we can look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Oh, yes. That was an incredible presentation, Director Horn.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to give you kudos, uh, for the time that you have been, um, Director of Parks and Rec, because you, you were promoted to Parks and Rec Director right before I came on board, I think. So I have only known Parks and Rec under your leadership. And, um, what I've seen is not only an increase in the community events, but also opportunities to bring in additional revenue streams to the county with the nominal fees that you have added to some of the events that you have, the adults-only events that you had. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've had a couple of cor- corporate-sponsored events at Spivey Splash?
Yes, we have.
Right. And all of that is bringing in revenue for the county. So when we talked about diversifying revenue streams, this is exactly, um, this is exactly what you are doing. And as you know, there has been confusion in the past with, um, individuals who are looking to book facilities, whether it's, um, the recreation centers or, or the athletic fields. And so to be able to have, um, a clear document to show and eliminate any confusion, I think that will help, um, with individuals who are seeking to use the facility, but also with the staff as they communicate to those individuals, well, these are what the requirements are. And then it puts that burden back on we, the Board of Commissioners, like, hey, the board approved that. If they have any issues, so that they're not harassing your staff members or yourself, they can bring it to the commissioners, so. Incredible presentation.
Thank you.
Also, I wanna say thank you also, um, also, we have our Groove on the Green that's coming up. So I, you know, uh, Director Ambles announced her stuff, so you know, I had to get ours in there for the Board of Commissioners. And our first one will be this Thursday, August fourteenth, so it'll be Boots on the Ground, uh, what else, Bike Night, it'll be, I'll let you say it, but...
Oh, it's Boots on the Ground, it's Bike Night. I look forward to everybody coming in their boots and their cowboy hats.
And their fans.
And your fans, where the fans at. So we're gonna have a really good time, and I look forward to doing Groove on the Green. It is at Lee Street Park, so it's gonna be a little bit different from being at International Park, but we're excited for the opportunity. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Well, thank you, and thank you for that. Are you getting another question? All right, Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, as pertaining to the amph- the new amphitheater that is being built. Uh, are we gonna be getting anything done to the Lakeview Center?
Event Center.
The Lakeview Event Center?
The Event Center, right.
So those renovations were done prior to us doing the renovations to the amphitheater. So this is only for the amphitheater, except for upstairs, the outside of the building. There will be some adjustments, adjustments made there. I know we need to do some things in the restroom and some other areas outside, but indoors has already been done.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, at this time, um, this ends our meeting for tonight. Does anybody have any discussion, any questions? You got it, Commissioner Hamburg?
I'll pay you for next week.
All right. Also, board members, please make sure if there's anything on the agenda that you have questions about, I know we talked about preliminary, preliminary items tonight, please send emails to those directors uh, prior to the board meeting next week, so they can answer those questions, um, that you may have, um, in, in addition to that board meeting. So again, thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.